Good evening and welcome to the August 14, 2017, meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the Republic of which is one nation under our command, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Cyamt. Lee.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Shildroth.
Here.
Hanky.
Here.
Pagano.
Here.
Parson.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes and executive meeting minutes of July 24, 2017? Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, so in the minutes from the council meeting, last council meeting, on line 54 and 55, Gene O'Camper, it has the mayor's appointment, 545 Vesper Drive, it should be 545 Versails.
That's all.
Thank you.
You move to approve that? All right. Councilman Shildroth moves to approve the minutes with the corrections, seconded by Mr. Egan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue for three minutes, not necessarily on the agenda this evening. Please remember that this is not a question and answer period, but we would be happy to stay after the meeting and discuss any issues you're having. The first one is Kevin O'Donnell. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Florissant, Missouri, 63031, Ward 4. I've got three things to mention tonight. First of all, I want to thank whoever's responsible, Mr. Caputa, or Officer Michaels, or Chief Lowry. I got my electronic speed sign today. If I was feeling better, I'd do a happy dance, but I'm in extreme pain right now. So anyway, what else? Oh, another thing is Ward 4, Neighborhood Watch, Ward Captain Robert Smith arranged to do a street cleaning or, you know, adopt a street program. And I think that's an excellent idea. I think it should be spread across all three, all nine wards. I drove down Humes the first time today in over a month, and it still looks good. I mean, I know that there's wrappers of stuff there, but it looks really good. And just imagine what that looks like if we could get other streets looking the same. And the third thing is, I've had this issue with Nixle. I had a doctor's appointment last Friday, in fact, five days last week, and I noticed I got stuck in traffic. And there was a car that was broke down in that third lane in front of McDonald's between Lindsay and Patterson. And I would like to see Nixle at least. I was told that they will not use, the Florissant Police will not use Nixle unless the street is completely shut down. There was an accident yesterday on Lindbergh and Washington Street. Traffic was all backed up, from what I've heard from other people. And the thing about it is that nobody knows about it until you get right up to it. And I'm on this side of, on that side of Lindbergh, and everything depends on Patterson Road for me. Now, I could have taken, if I'd have known it was jammed up like it was, or backed up, whatever, I could have possibly taken a Shackelford. But Shackelford's also got a lot of problems, too. And I'd like to see Nixle not used for broken water mains, Granview Plaza doesn't have water, or something like that. I'd like to see the traffic, because I've seen, I've called in traffic yesterday, or in the past where there were accidents and stuff, and traffic's backed up for a half a mile, and nothing, and, you know, they said that they will not put it on Nixle. Hazelwood does it all the time, and...
Okay. Thank you.
Is that my three minutes left?
We'll let the three, yes.
Thank you.
We'll let the chief know.
Thank you.
Good evening. Please state your name and address.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Paul Young, 525 Malanphy, Florissant, Missouri, 63031. Good evening to everybody. Basically, not really to complain, I'm sure you all get enough of that, especially Mr. Caputa, but that's your job. No. The speeding, you know, cars, you know, entering and leaving Malanphy from Patterson, that's still an issue. I always try to, you know, cut the sidewalks and make them look nice, and I really risk my life being out there, you know, people just don't slow down. I step a little bit out in the street, and they just, like I'm not even there. And that's about it. I mean, you know, just, I know it sounds like an old, you know, broken, it sounds like a broken record, I'm not here to try to say that, you know, the Florissant Police aren't doing their job, it's just getting more and more dangerous. I said I would maybe say a joke, I mentioned it before, but I don't know if you remember what it was. Okay. Does anyone have any idea what the worst kind of tick, if you get, you know, summertime, spring, summer, you get ticks, you know, you're out doing yard work, worst kind of tick you could possibly come down with? Politic.
Smart man, that's why you're an attorney.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. And then the next item on is public hearings, and there aren't any of those either. Where are we? Now we'll go into new business, and the first item under new business is board appointments. Mr. Hanky?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Madam President. I would like to appoint Joseph Kane, 665 St. Catherine, to the Personnel Commission.
Thank you. That is seconded by Mr. Parson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The appointment is made. Mr. Cyam?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to appoint Andrew Memes of 2065 Pyrenees to the Landmark and Historic District Commission.
That it. Hold up a second. Seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The appointment is made. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Mr. Paul Maginelli to the Personnel Commission.
Second.
And he lives on Estes, but I forget your address, Paul.
Seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The appointment is made. Mr. Shildroth?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to reappoint Mr. Paul Smith, 1110 St. Bernadette, to the Citizens Participation Committee.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The appointment is made.
Thank you.
You have one?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to reappoint Andrea Purnell from Ward 2 to the Disability Awareness Commission.
Councilman Egan moves to approve the mayor's appointment, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The appointment is made. The next item on the agenda is resolutions. We have Resolution Number 998.
Resolution to the City of Florissant, supporting a grant application for the park improvement to Mannion Park.
Councilman Shildroth moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution to the City of Florissant, supporting a grant application for the park improvements to Mannion Park.
Councilman Egan moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Cyamt.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that, oh, we're on reading?
Resolution to the City of Florissant, supporting a grant application for the park improvements to Mannion Park.
Now we go to the final. Before the final vote, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Cyamt.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Resolution Number 998 passes. We'll now move to first readings. Bill Number 9298.
Ordinance to amend Chapter 510 Occupancy Permit Required, Section 510-1 through 0 C., Fees by Adding an Update Provision for Foster Care Families.
Councilman Hanky moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Parson. Discussion? Mr. Hanky?
Yes, this was something that was brought up to one of our constituents, one of our citizens here. I was a foster parent. They were going to use a facility here, and the foster child did not have a residence card. So we update the residence cards for if you have a birth in the family or whatever, but this was almost treated like a non-resident. Well, my position on it is, and hopefully all of ours, is that I think they're doing a great service for these foster kids, and I wanted to update our position at the city that they can go in with the documentation, because the guy was telling me that they have ample documentation for the foster children, go into our public works and get an updated residency permit, occupancy permit, for that child at no charge. So at least they're welcome into our city as foster children. I think it's an honorable thing to at least make them feel as welcome as we can make them, and give them a sense of community also. That's what's behind it.
Councilman Caputa?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Yes, I agree with Mr. Hanky on this, and if they have documentation that they are actual foster child, and they're not trying to pull one over on the city as saying that, okay, it's a foster child, but really it's his cousin's, friend's, sister's, brother, you know, one of them deals. So long as they have documentation, I will be in support of this.
All in favor for a second reading?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Ordinance to amend Chapter 510 Occupancy Permit Required, Section 510-1 through 0 C., Fees by Adding an Update Provision for Foster Care Families.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to
John Engelmeyer, 1281 Graham Road, 63031. I was not ready necessarily for a three readings on this particular bill, but I did do some research. I called my state legislator concerning foster care program, whether this was legal or not, particularly on the fee. The registration of an individual is not the issue here, but the fee. I myself, 26 years ago, last Sunday, became a foster parent to a young man, still to this day, he's part of my family. The $30 fee, I think, is wrong. I think it's unbecoming of the City of Florissant. I went into the St. Louis County Municipal League Program today to find out if there's any other municipality that does, in fact, enforce this, or has this. Went talking to my state legislator, and I'll use his name, Paul Fitzwater, Donna Batosi. He was totally unaware of anyone having such legislation, and the unbecomingness of the $30 fee. And by the way, his comment to me was money grab. All it is is about money. Registration is a simple process. I did it 26 years ago, when I called about Chris. Had no particular problem, although he was older than a 14 or a 12-year-old or 11-year-old to use the facilities here, but the issue that came up is that I did get him registered, and he was here. I disagree with the fee. I think it's appropriate to get him registered, for nothing else, to have him at my address. Foster care program is a great program. I went through hell and back on a foster care program with him in my home. My family opened up their doors, their lives, to an individual who was unfortunately given away by the state.
Mr. Engelmeyer? I don't know if you read, there is no charge for updating the...
What is the $30 fee for? It says permit update, $30.
Except for this.
Foster children.
Except for the natural bar and bar of the foster child.
That's the original occupancy permit.
Do it, ma'am.
So this would be, right, I mean, is hereby amended by adding a provision for a no-charge update for properly documented foster children?
Okay, well then, I may correct then. I wanted to make sure that this was not an additional fee.
No, it is not.
Because, again, for anyone becoming a foster parent, that ought to be applauded.
Right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. You don't need to know anymore?
No, I just wanted to clarify that, so everybody knew.
Okay, I knew that I had read that in there, and I was trying to find it through these papers, so let's see. All right. Hearing no further comments. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Cyamt.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Bill Number 9298 passes and becomes ordinance Number 8337. Bill Number 9299?
Ordinance amending ordinance Number 8183, establishing a length of service plan for seasonal part-time employees by adding position of volunteer coordinator.
8337. Councilman Shildroth moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Ordinance amending ordinance Number 8183, establishing a length of service plan for seasonal part-time employees by adding a position of volunteer coordinator.
Councilman Shildroth moves for a third reading.
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Hanky. Roll call, please.
Cyamt.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Cyamt.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Bill Number 9299 passes and becomes ordinance Number 8338. Bill Number 9300?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $36,000 from account number 0339 Ice and Snow Removal to account number 0330 Vehicle and Equipment Repair, and a transfer of $9,000 from account number 8050 Professional Services to account number 8030 Equipment Repair.
Councilman Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $36,000 from account number 0339 Ice and Snow Removal to account number 0330 Vehicle and Equipment Repair, and a transfer of $9,000 from account number 8050 Professional Services to account number 8030 Equipment Repair.
Councilman Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Parson. Roll call, please.
Cyamt.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $36,000 from account number 0339 Ice and Snow Removal to account number 0330 Vehicle and Equipment Repair, and a transfer of $9,000 from account number 8050 Professional Services to account number 8030 Equipment Repair.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Cyamt.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Bill Number 9300 passes and becomes ordinance Number 8339. Bill Number 9301?
Ordinance amending Title III, Schedule III, Stop Intersections, Subsection 3B, Two-Way Stops by Adding Intersection Equiduct and Hamiltonian.
Bill Number 9302?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $5,000 from account number 4059 Election Expense to account number 4033 Copy Equipment and Supply to Cover Printing Supplies Through the End of the Fiscal Year.
I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $5,000 from account number 4059 Election Expense to account number 4033 Copy Equipment and Supply to Cover the Printing Supplies Through the End of the Fiscal Year.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Cyamt.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Bill Number 9302 passes and becomes ordinance Number 8340. I would like to make a motion to change the September 11 meeting to Tuesday, September 19, due to scheduling conflicts. Seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is council announcements. Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Ms. President. First of all, the Florissant Police Benevolent Association is going to hold their annual golf tournament on the 29th of September at the Golf Club of Florissant. If you're interested in sponsoring a hole, playing a foursome, or donating prizes or giveaways of any type, please call Captain Bowden, Captain Bowden at the PD, 831-7000. Number two, our good friends at the Knights of Columbus are holding yet another awesome food truck night this coming Friday at the Knights of Columbus Ground from 5 to 8. There will be 15 food trucks there this time, including wings and something or another like that, they just told me, I forgot already. But they tell me it's going to be a great event, they always have the ballgame on, it's going to be a great evening to be out in the City of Florissant. And remember, if you come, to bring a canned good, some canned goods for the team. And finally, I would like to extend my most heartfelt congratulations to Terry and Jeff Caputa on their 30 years of marriage today.
other side. They did go up, got met with St. Louis County a week ago, and talked about getting the silt fence all cleaned up on both sides, weeded it up and down that project. They took care of it the next day. I also asked that labor be put on each side of the road and cleaned up both sides. That has been done, because I was out there when they was doing it. So please have patience, be careful. There's a bunch of construction workers out there, and please slow down, you guys. Everybody's in a big hurry to go nowhere on that road. That road is constantly getting bombarded on social media. The road is not even done yet, and everybody's accusing the contractor of doing a terrible job. I've kept my eye on it. I know Tim's been in contact with him also. They're not finished with the project yet, so let's have a little patience on that. I also want to give a shout-out to team, like I always do. There's always somebody hungry morning, noon, or night. I also would like to give a shout-out to the local state reps, especially Cora Walker. She invited me up to Operation Food Search, which is one of the biggest food donations in our state, and that's one that plugs team on a continuous basis. And I spent six hours out there giving out backpacks and food for the needy. So please, you guys, keep team in mind. If you got some extra change, some extra canned goods, please run them down there. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, if you own a firearm, make sure you secure it. Don't leave it in your vehicle. Make sure you keep it secured in your house. Another one, keep your lights on, porch lights. If you can possibly keep your porch lights on. Light is some of the best deterrent that you have for crime. So make sure you put your porch light on. Also, I had a resident that live in the ward that wrote a letter to me stating that sewer lateral program that she had done to her was excellent. The people that did the work was courteous, pleasant, and very professional. They kept the job very efficient. They were very clean with it. So put a shout-out to the sewer lateral program for that. Also, September 16th, it's on a Saturday, the Suicide Prevention Awareness fundraiser that they have every year. This is the ninth annual fundraiser for suicide prevention, and it's sponsored by the Youth Advisory Commission for this city. Very good, very good event that they hold. It's at St. Ferdinand Park. They have a softball tournament. They have a 5K race and a one-mile fun run, and they're doing something different this year. They're going to have a glow run at night on that day, the September 16th. So it's a very good fundraiser for suicide prevention. So if you can participate, get ahold of the city. Here's a couple of numbers, 921-4250, or 921-4466 to sign up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to let everyone know that the Prince Hall Masons and Harmony Grand Chapter, order of the Eastern Star of the greater metropolitan St. Louis area, are inviting all the Florissant residents to their annual Prince Hall Americanism Day Parade. That's going to be held Sunday, September 10th, at 1:00 p.m. The parade begins at the James J. Egan Center. It's going to proceed south towards Waterford, east on St. Catherine, north on Meadowgrass, and then west on Parker to conclude at the James J. Egan Center. The parade, along with the other endeavors of the Prince Hall Masons, is to raise awareness of the constant need for charitable giving, for youth scholarships, and to provide food and clothing to those that are in need. Furthermore, the parade brings awareness to Prince Hall, who was an African-American abolitionist that was the founder of Prince Hall Freemasonry. He lobbied for education rights for black children and was one of the most influential free black leaders in the late 1700s. I've been a member of this organization since 2004, and I'm proud to have the great City of Florissant to be the venue for this parade this year. Additionally, I want to encourage all the residents of Florissant to establish what I call your Florissant Five. Basically, I'm asking everyone to establish a personal relationship with at least five of your neighbors on your street. The neighbors to your right, to your left, directly across the street from you, and then the ones diagonally from you. I understand that oftentimes, people get really caught up with their own day-to-day schedules, and I never really... And they never really take the time to get to know their neighbors, who may be, you know, next door to them, or the new family that may be across the street, I mean, that moved in across the street from you. In my opinion, if you develop those personal relationships with your neighbors, just beginning on this small scale, people would be more likely to report unusual activity to the police, which could ultimately assist in reducing crime in your area. Furthermore, with the events that occurred in Charlottesville, Virginia over the weekend, I believe that something needs to be done to try and bring communities closer together, rather than allow hate to consume us. We should... We should remember Heather Hire, who stood against racism and lost her life in Charlottesville at the young age of 32 when a car drove through a crowd of demonstrators. I believe that no matter what race you are, people generally want the same things out of life. You want to feel safe in your community that you live in. You want to feel that you have the same opportunities in life to be successful and to provide for your family. I am proud of the diversity that we have here in the City of Florissant, and I don't want to... I don't want the fear of our cultural differences to be a barrier in really getting to know each other. So what I ask of you today is, do you know your Florissant Five, and please get to know your neighbors? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Childress?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to thank the residents for their continued patience on Graham Road with the MSD project that is in its final stage. Also, on Washington, the project is continuing, and the results are favorable, and please continue to be patient on Washington. I would like to congratulate the Russell family and their establishment, BJ's Bar, for being recognized in the 2017 Bar Guide by the Riverfront Times in the Friends and Neighbors section. It's a nice little honor for that longtime establishment. And on September 14th, Mrs. Pagano and I will be co-hosting a ward meeting at the James J. Egan Center at 7:00. A postcard will be going out. Thank you.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that next Monday, weather permitting, there is going to be a solar eclipse that'll be in this area, if you haven't... But I do want to caution, we've been hearing an awful lot about it, and there is a lot of danger, so watch your kids and stuff. Trying to look at that sun, you can cause permanent damage to your eyes if you don't do it. And there's all this stuff about the fake glasses are out there and things. So just everybody be careful. That's all I got.
Thanks. I was going to say that, too, as a reminder, but that's okay. But I'm going to pull it out of the mayor's packet, because I'm sure he's going to say it, too. I'm just going to make a small plea for volunteers. We have many boards and commissions that need people to volunteer. Some meet once a month, some meet just as needed, but really, if you have an hour or so that you want to volunteer for a commission, please get ahold of myself, City Hall, or any of your council members, because we can really use you. Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Parsons, did you mention the golf tournament, sort of your... Also, we were happy to accommodate your parade, and also happy that you guys chose our golf course for your tournament, so you want to mention that?
Yeah, the golf tournament. The golf tournament actually takes place at the old Florissant Golf Course, and it's going to be on September 3rd. Once again, the fundraiser is to help support our youth and their scholarships, and also to feed the needy. And also, we make donations to the St. Louis Children's Hospital. So if anybody is an avid golfer, feel free to participate. But time is definitely running out.
Thanks. I also want to thank Mr. Parsons for the terrific weather that we've had for the concerts every Saturday night. I don't think we've ever had better weather than we've had lately for the concerts at St. Ferdinand Lake. And for the second year in a row, the senior champion, the St. Louis City Champion Senior Division at Forest Park is a Florissant golf course player. This time, it was Skip Wilson. Last year, it was Dave Estes. The grand opening of the newly renovated Florissant Valley Branch of the library was on August 2nd, and I believe we have the best library in the St. Louis area now. We have, in addition to a totally renovated library, they recaptured the whole floor space downstairs. None of it is used for storage anymore. It's all for teenagers and low and younger. It's very colorfully decorated, and it's going to be great for kids. They got a Dana Brown Early Explorers Area and an Emerson Explorer Area. The one of them's for the toddlers, and the next one's for the little bit bigger kids. And then the upstairs is very professional. It's got laptop bars and everything technical, and just a terrific, terrific renovation to that library. We're going to have the best library in the St. Louis region for years to come. And also proud of the Ferguson Florissant School District for unveiling the STEAM Academy, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. This is just a sign that the Ferguson Florissant School District is really on the move. I'm very impressed with the leadership of Dr. Davis and the school board. Ferguson Florissant School District, very... Just want to give them a great congratulations for the STEAM. It's the Ferguson Florissant School District with the STEAM Academy in the City of Hazelwood, so go figure that one out. Was happy last week to open up the ribbon-cutting for Smoothie King. That place is a tremendous hit, and it's in Ward Three. And we have... We're going to have a plaque dedication for the late Ken Otto of Handyman Hardware fame, and also he was a great humanitarian in the Florissant area. We're going to dedicate a plaque in the sidewalk on August 30th at 3:30 St. Francis, and then that's going to be right before the Fourth Wednesday Night Out, which is going to be hosted by Stem's Bunkers and Husband State Farm and KB Electric. The long-anticipated disc golf tournament, the Florissant Open, is going to be at Donegan Park on September 9th. And so if you're a disc player, sign up for that at Egan Center. Call 921-4466 to enter. And the only thing I'm going to mention other in September is the senior town hall meeting is going to be September 14th. More information to come. Thank you.
Wow. The next regular meeting of the city council will be on Monday, August 28th, 2017. Councilman Hanky moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Childress. All in favor? Aye opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending. How did he do?